Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and Happy New Year. I call this January 9th, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Quesada is excused. We will start with a silent invocation and a pledge of allegiance. So let's please have a moment of silence. The pledge will be led by Commissioner Olivas. So our Item 3 is our election of Chair and Vice Chair. We will now take nominations for the 2024 Chair of the Board of County Commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Olivas.
It'd be my honor to nominate yourself for the position of Chair. I think you've been an excellent leader in the last session of the Commission, and I look forward to working with you in that role going forward. I think you've done an excellent job, and we need some continuity of leadership.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Discussion?
I would just like to note, as my colleague has, that I just have been really grateful for your leadership and for taking control and making our meetings effective and efficient, and I appreciate your leadership so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I would also like to say that, as, and I don't know how many people in the audience know this, but you were elected Chair as your first year as a Commissioner, and it's a lot to learn, just the rules of the game as a Commissioner, much less being the Chair, and you've done both well, so, yeah, well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Thank you. And I also wanted to say thank you to my colleagues and to the staff. It has been a real pleasure, as they say, drinking out of a fire hose this first year, so hopefully I will do better this second year, but you can count on collaboration with all of you, as well as other entities, other governments, other nonprofits, as we move forward on some very important work that we need to do together, and we have some of those items on our agenda tonight, so, thank you. So now, I will take a nomination for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I would like to, and would be honored to nominate my colleague, Commissioner Eric Olivas. I have been, as in your leadership, just really excited about his leadership, thankful for the ways that we're collaborating and pushing for things. I am really honored to nominate for Vice Chair, Commissioner Eric Olivas.
And I'll second that. Any comments? I just have one, and I wanted to thank outgoing Vice Chair Barboia. Thank you so much for your friendship and your work this past year as the Vice Chair, and I too am looking forward to working with Commissioner Olivas as we move forward. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
That's it. Thanks.
There we go. So, Item 4 on our agenda, the Open Meetings Act Resolution. Commissioners, I move approval of administrative resolution AR 2024-1, establishing the provisions of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes. Item 5, announcements of additions or changes. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, there's two. First, Item 5A, Constitutional Amendment 2, allowing public investment in community infrastructure to be added to the agenda as Item 11C. And then the second one is Item 7A, Acknowledgement of BCFR Station 33. We are requesting it to be deferred, and a vote is required for the changes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other changes from the Commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to recognize that today is the National Law Enforcement Day, and so, on behalf of myself, as well as the Commission, I'd like to take a minute to just thank our officers everywhere for everything they do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, there is a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you. Now, Item 6, Count on Us Minute. County Manager, or Tia? I'm not sure who's leading that.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I think many of us know that we've recently seen some snowstorms, some heavy snowstorms, especially like in the east mountain area, and so while we are all comfortable, warm, in beds asleep, we have our county road crews out there doing their best, and they're making our commutes a lot safer because of their around-the-clock hard work. So I just wanted to, we just wanted to acknowledge our snow removal crews, and we wanted to thank them for their very hard work, and I want to thank Antonio and Amor. Thank you all for your leadership, and Elias. We appreciate all of you, so thank you, Madam Chair.
The weather report is all about snow, and while most of us are still asleep, the snowplow drivers with the Public Works Division and Maintenance Department are already at work, clearing the roads we use to get to our destinations.
We start at 4:00 AM to make sure that we're addressing commutes to work, and we will work late into the evening, 7:00 to 8:00 PM, to address commutes home.
If it's a Saturday, we'll watch the weather and say, hey, we'll give them a heads-up that we're probably going to work the weekend.
Amor Solano is the Roads Maintenance Manager. She says snow preps begin early.
Before winter season starts coming along, we start preparing our equipment, which means our dump trucks, we start equipping them with spreader boxes in the back and attaching the plows to the front.
When the seasons change and winter arrives, it's just a matter of time before the storms hit.
We do watch a lot of our apps on our phones for weather. The National Weather Service gives us little alerts. Some of our staff live in the mountains, so they can judge by the clouds if it's going to snow, temperatures and clouds, that's what we're looking for.
George Bennett has been with the department for 21 years.
When there's going to be a snow event, we try to start a couple days early and get all the equipment ready, and we make sure we have all the materials in place and all the equipment is set up to do snow removal operations.
By the time the snow starts coating the roads, the Burnco crews are more than ready to clear them.
A lot of my staff love snow. They like to be out in the snow and pushing snow along. We plow the snow off the road, and then we apply salt to the pavement, and that just helps any, like, de-icing of the stuff underneath. The cinders provides attraction.
It generally takes about 12 hours for us to clear the routes one time with a fully-staffed crew, so a shift is a minimum of 12 hours. We try to cover both rush hours.
Their coverage area in the east mountains is vast.
We have 307 miles of road to plow, and of course, we're doing two passes.
The snowplow crew's territory not only consists of paved roads, but gravel ones as well.
Of course, it's dangerous to be out on a mountain in ice and snow with a heavy equipment, but our guys are well-trained, and we have good equipments.
They also rely on good old-fashioned communications, keeping in touch with each other throughout their shifts.
They're very dedicated in what they do, and they work as a team, and I like to hear them on the radio where they check on each other to make sure that everybody's safe.
The long hours are part of the job, and these drivers truly enjoy what they do.
I love snow. The guys are good at it, really like it.
Bennett also finds satisfaction by seeing the instant return on his labor.
You're up in the mountains, if you're pushing a couple feet of snow, it's flying off the side, you can see where you've been and where you're going.
The crews receive many kudos from the public.
We have a lot of residents that are disabled, elderly, people have to get to work, essential staff, school buses. We have a very important task to get our roads clear for people to go about their day. I think our department is a very good team, and we do take care of each other and our staff. We do appreciate the guys going out and making sure that our roads are cleared up. It is a dangerous task, and they do take that on, and we definitely appreciate them.
Thank you, Team Burnco. Thank you, County Manager, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam County Manager, for spotlighting the work that our crews do in Public Works, especially in the east mountains. Of course, we've had a couple of storms just in the last week, and my office has gotten many, many, many emails and calls about the snow, and our crews are doing a great job out there. I was just on a call before this with some folks in the Monticello community, and they just commented on what an excellent job our crews do. So I know that usually, Amor and Elias and everybody, including Augustine in my office, can say, usually, it's the folks that didn't get their road plowed or weren't happy that contact us, but there are residents out there that notice the good work that we do, that our crews do, and they appreciate it, and it's so helpful. So just want to recognize you and reiterate the great work you guys are doing out there in the east mountains.
Thank you. Any comments? Thank you again. We move on to Item 7, Proclamations. Finance, DCM Shirley Reagan.
Good evening, Commissioners, Happy New Years. Madam Chair, Baca, congratulations on your appointment again, and members of the Commission, my name is Shirley Reagan. I'm the Deputy County Manager for Finance. My team is coming up. It is with great honor that I stand before you to present the Rising Star Award to members of the Finance Division's team from the Accounting and Budget Department and the Finance Administration Section. At its annual conference on November 17th, 2023, the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, known as DFA, presented the Rising Star Award to Bernalillo County, thus recognizing the county for its financial achievements. Each local government division analyst was asked to nominate from their assigned local government entities those who were deserving of recognition based on improving quality of budgets and financial reporting and making significant progress. Stephanie Ortiz, Budget and Finance Analyst of the Local Government Division, nominated Bernalillo County for the Rising Star Award. To make it more special, Bernalillo County was also selected by Director Wellesley Billingsley and Deputy Director Jeanette Gueigles for this honor. The work specifically noted was by Amber Bonstel for the annual and biannual budget submissions and quarterly budget adjustments. Prior to Amber, Crystal Trujillo held this responsibility. Denise Benavides for the preparation of the debt levy worksheet, which was used to analyze the county's ability to meet its debt obligations for the general obligation bonds. And then special recognition was given to Jennifer Galendo for the accounting quarterly submission of actual data. She was recognized as the lead, Bernalillo County's, as the lead for Bernalillo County's Accounting and Budget Department team. Jennifer has tested pilot software for DFA's quarterly reporting system and continues to diligently work with DFA to align state requirements with the county's quarterly reports and to ensure the reporting is accurate and timely. Present with me this evening are Jackie Sanchez, the Accounting and Budget Director, Jennifer Galendo, the Principal Accountant, we have Stephanie Sanchez, the Deputy Director of Accounting, Crystal Trujillo, Principal Budget Analyst, and Denise Benavides, Principal Financial Fiscal Analyst. Stephanie of DFA requested that we take a picture with the Board of County Commissioners to send to them so they can place it in their office to memorialize the recognition.
Right above our budget book.
This is the award. I'm very proud of my team. We work very hard. They work diligently with all the departments to try to understand the needs and put it in a format that we can address those needs in a timely manner and present the budgets to you all and keep our financials accurate and for the transparency. So we, I feel like we're a real good team, and we work together, and we're cross-functional, and so I appreciate, you know, Julie working with us and giving us the opportunity to do the things that we do and be able to represent the county and try to represent it well.
Thank you, Shirley, and I have to say that, thank you, ladies, and all of these beautiful women and smart brains. You are a testament to young girls everywhere in middle school and high schools studying their math, so, thank you, and we're glad you're here with us.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
I just also want to say, you know, it's such an honor, well-deserved, and even sweeter coming from the outside, nominating you, and, you know, in any organization, finance is the lifeblood, that if it's not going well, things can go south really quick. Meanwhile, nobody would know about it until it's too late, and the fact that we're doing so well below the surface is just a testament to how great your team is, and keep doing it. And you were talking about the debt obligations and the bond management. As during my day job as an investment advisor, I always tell my clients, you've got to respect debt, because it's a powerful tool, but just like any other powerful tool, it can kill you if you're not careful, and you treat it with the respect it deserves, and by doing that, you're taking care of Bernalillo County, the taxpayers, so thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Your mic's not here.
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Benson stole my, I was going to say, we know you're great, but the fact that somebody else saw it and nominated you all for this is just such a testament again to, I just, thank you. I feel very secure knowing you all are running things. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Olivas.
One more. I just wanted to say thank you to your team. It's always a pleasure working with the Budget Team, and specifically, as Commissioner Baca and I came in new last year, getting us up to speed and then, you know, taking our input and making sure that we are included in the process, and it's been a very inclusive process this year, starting with, you know, the individual budget workshop meetings to then, you know, we had the larger group meeting, we have another one coming up. Just really want to commend you for taking our input and making that actionable and listening to us and bringing us into the process, and we really appreciate that. I really appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you all come up, and we'll get that picture? Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to Item 8, Public Comment and Communications, but before we hear Public Comment, we will hear Communications, Item 8, A through 8C. Detention Facility Advisory Board Annual Report.
Well, congratulations, Chair Baca, our very best to you and to all the members of the Commission. I'm Michael Breacher. It's a pleasure to be here. With me is the Vice Chair of the Detention Facility Advisory Board, Bob Martinez. Bob, thank you for joining us as well. Tell you a little bit about the detention.
Mr. Chair, if I may for just a moment, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I want to thank you for recognizing, as a former retired federal law enforcement officer, I want to thank you for recognizing the men and women in law enforcement by showing your appreciation for the work they do. Thank you so much.
And while we're at it, I want to thank each of you for appointing me to this board, and tell you, you have my deep appreciation for that and my commitment to serve you, and that's true of the entire board. Let me tell you a little bit about the board. We have a member from, who has some police experience, we have a couple of attorneys, people who've been involved in community service, substance abuse programs, a number of different programs, and people from the general public. So we have a really, really good mix of people with a genuine commitment to doing things that are helpful to you, to the jail, and to this community. The Detention Facility Oversight Board has responsibility for ensuring that we are in compliance, in compliance with the MDC, McClinton Compliance Lawsuit, and so we get regular updates on that. We make sure that we meet national standards, because it's critical that the jail meets national standards, and it's true that they do, they really do fine work, and also that they protect the health, not just of the detainees, that's a critical element, but also that they are careful for the people who work there, the administration, the COs. We also are very mindful that we work for you all, we work for the County Manager, we work for the jail employees, and we work for the people of the city of Albuquerque. So it's a good board, and we understand that we have a responsibility to the community and work hard to make sure we maintain that. We review a number of reports on a regular basis that you might want to know about. We had reports during the COVID period, and the work that was done to make sure that the operation of the jail continues in a safe manner, the prison rape initiative, which is some federal legislation, and use of force incidents, we review a lot of that. Those are just some of the reports we get on a regular basis and monitor very carefully. It's important to know that in the area of use of force, that you should know since 2020, because of the Office of Professional Standards, the number of incidents of use of force has gone down somewhat, and so we're pleased about their work in the Office of Professional Standards. Highlights in our report, I'll share with you, and I'll be very brief. Highlights in our report include a constant battle to make sure that we can eliminate the problems with people being required to work a number of shifts. I must say that I'm very pleased with the work at Bernalillo County with the Commissioners in the fact that you all raised the salaries for some of the CO people, and I think that's so important, and I want to say that you're to be congratulated for that work. I think that's really important. And in terms of the forced overtime work, we worked with many people to talk about that, to see what can be done, because some people were staying on for two shifts in a row, two eight-hour shifts, and it was a lot of work, and we're glad that that was included in the collective bargaining agreement. We had a name change, and I'm going to go to Mr. Vice Chair, if you'd like to talk about the name change for the board.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, as you know, we were in consultation with the county administration in terms of what the role of the responsibility of the board is, you know. In terms of management oversight, clearly that's the responsibility of the Commission. We follow in line in terms of being an advisory board, so we felt that it would be more appropriate to redefine, if you will, or restate what the name of the board is, and then now it is the Detention Facility Advisory Board, as opposed to it was previously the Detention Facility Advisory Management Oversight Board. So we made that slight change, you know, which is more in keeping with what our role truly is and in accordance with the ordinance. Mr. Chair.
And we thank you all for your support of that. I think it makes sense, and I think the elected officials now are doing some things that our board shouldn't do, but really should be in the hands of the elected officials. I want to say something that's really important, is that in Bernalillo County, we've had a lot of work with the Gordon Brunel School, and we are supporters of the school and think that the school does important work, and congratulations to the graduates from Gordon Brunel School. It's a community school, and it's so important, and so we're very pleased about that. Peanut Butter and Jelly has been an important program. They have a wonderful, wonderful program, and they've been working with the jail, and I think that that's also extremely important. And Fathers Building Futures, just another program that we work with, good people doing what they can to improve the lives of people who we visit in our facility. We also are notified of inmate deaths. As a board, we recognize this is a problem. Watch it carefully, do what we can do to make things better. It is improving. We recognize that fentanyl is a real problem in the community, and that many people who come to us have that problem already, and it's something that we're watching very closely, looking at what other jails are doing around the country, because this is not just a New Mexico problem or a Bernalillo County problem, but it's a problem throughout the country, and we're doing what we can, we're focused on it. We're going to pay it close attention to this, and we will do what we can and advise you as we come across items that we think will be helpful. It's a critical area for us. I want to congratulate you on another thing that I think is really important, and I think will make a difference, and that is the county working with UNMH. I think that will be a wonderful way to improve some of the conditions in the jail, and to the County Manager, thank you for your work, and to you as a board approving the relationship between UNMH and the jail. I think things will be so much better. We're growing, we're getting better together. We're not where we need to be, but we're sure moving in the right direction, and you all are to be congratulated. You know, I think you run a really good jail. It's not perfect. There's a lot that needs to be done, but we'll do our part to help to make things better. Our board continues to support the programs within the facility. We encourage new community partners to come apply and help inmates and COs. And I want to say that, one thing I think that makes a difference, County Attorney attends our meeting, County Manager attends every meeting, they hear the information, not from the Chairman of the Advisory Board, but they actually hear it directly from people who need the information, and Manager Baca, thank you very much, and Mr. Martinez, thank you very much, I don't recognize you with your shades on. And I will say that the board is required to meet, it's required to meet once every quarter, and the board has elected to meet on a monthly basis, and I need to tell you that the members of the board come prepared, they want to be active, constructive participants in that jail, and I think they are. They're wonderful people, and I will close by saying that I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about this. We'll come back and, you know, when it's scheduled again, and we'll make a further report, but just to say thank you very much, and thank you for your time, and if you have any closing thoughts.
Well, I just want to echo what the Chairman has said, you know, we really appreciate the support that we get from the Commission. We especially appreciate the support we get from the staff at the county level, and clearly the close working relationship we have with the staff at MDC. Clearly, you know, one of the important things that they're very much concerned about is not only the well-being of the inmates, the detainees, but also the well-being of the officers that are working within that facility. So peer support programs that they have developed are very important. So peer support programs that they have developed are very important, because we're very much concerned about, not only about the wellness of the inmates, but also the wellness of our officers. Again, echoing what our chairman has pointed out, we want to thank all of you for your support. We look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you, be responsive to what you, what you want to ask of us, and whatever we can do to improve the quality of life, if you will, not only for the officers, but also for the inmates. Thank you.
And again, we thank you. And, and, and Mr. Vice Chair, it is so important that it's, it's the welfare of the inmates, of the COs, the administration at the jail, and our support for the management here in Burnley Oak County, and our dedication to work with you all. So thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you both very much, and please express our thanks to the entire board. I really appreciate that you are volunteering in your community services, really important to us and well noted. Did anybody, Commissioner Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chair Brasher, for your, for your report, and Mr. Vice Chair. I have a couple questions for you and just comments in general. So the first thing, this is the Detention Facility Advisory Board. Do you all have any role involved with the youth detention center, or are you strictly focused on the, the MDC?
We were focused on MDC.
Okay, understood. And then the second one, I, I just want to congratulate you all and the county manager and the jail administration for their work. As we've said many times here, bringing UNMH into that facility is huge for, for medical care and behavioral health care. And I know that we've made some investments this year, capital investments in new scanning technologies and other improvements out there to, to work, as you say, to continue to try to address issues and make that facility better. I know that we're, you also mentioned in here our, our work with working dogs, to, to bring dogs into the jail to, to look for contraband and other things, which is, is one way to try to prevent overdose deaths and, and other problems in that facility. So one issue you raise in there that, that sort of struck a chord with me is the Gordon Brunel funding issue. It's mentioned in here that that program only applies to, to folks that are under age at this point, which I would assume is basically no one in, in MDC should be under the age of 18, they, they should be at the YDC. So, and maybe this is a question for the county manager or something we could follow up on, but what's the current status of that? Can inmates at this, at the facility get, work on their diploma and, and work through this program? Is it funded? Because I'm really concerned about making sure that there's programming out there that helps us bring people back into society, bring people into the community, bring people into the workforce, and, and that seems like a really important program.
Madam Chairman and, and Member Olivas, I wonder if I could ask the county manager, with your permission, to, to sort of summarize where we are with Gordon Brunel. We were very concerned that at one point they were talking about funding in Santa Fe, in the legislature, and, and so we sent communication to people in Santa Fe of our interest in the program and our hope that that program will continue. And I don't know the current status. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Member Olivas, Ms. Chairman, or, or Ms. Baca.
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, and thank you for asking that question. We too share your sentiments about the Gordon Brunel program. And so to my knowledge, it's up and running. It's a very robust program, and if they do not get the funding that they need, we are committed to continuing to, to support and fund the program and, and, and to provide space for them to operate. So if I, I haven't heard anything about them going away or anything like that, but I think it's, it's a very successful program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chairman and Member Olivas, and congratulations to the graduates who recently graduated from the school.
Thank you.
If I may, Member Olivas, one of the things that we're also concerned about, and we know that we have a 30-day session coming up in Santa Fe, and certainly we wanted to say as a board, we're available to assist the, the commission as well as management and any legislative priorities that you might be putting forth that can support, you know, the programs that are at MDC. One of the issues that we've seen with regards to education is the, when we talk about Gordon Brunel, we're talking about high school graduates. We also need to be talking about adult education. And clearly, that's something that the legislature should probably take a look at, because again, you know, in terms of what PED does, Public Education Department, you know, focused on high school students, many of the inmates in MDC are over the age of 18, and clearly they need to have some kind of support or assistance. So any discussions you might have in terms of expanding that particular program to include individuals that are over the age of 18, because the real issue is that of adult education, and preparing these young men and women go back into society, be productive members of the society.
Commissioner Olivas, and then Commissioner Barbola.
I, I really want to thank you for your point there, Mr. Martinez, about the, the adult education aspect. I, you know, it came to mind thinking about making sure that if, if, if folks are in there for, for a longer stint, you know, that there's opportunities perhaps for them to train in the trades, you know, auto repair, there, there's any number of things, programs through CNM to pursue, you know, higher education degrees, those kinds of things, I think is, would be really a wonderful thing for us to look at and pursue there, in, in pursuit of bettering our community and, and bettering the, the citizens that are in that facility temporarily. The last thing that I wanted to raise, and, and this is really just more of a, a comment, is that the McLendon lawsuit is, is mentioned in your report, and it's, you know, really a key guiding issue at the facility for, and for the county in general. And I just want to, to comment that as a commissioner, you know, I think part of my role is, is to, to put forward a, you know, a policy vision and agenda here. And I, I really think it's important that, that we focus on that, and I know that we are, but that the county administration and the commission really focus on that, because not only are the, the issues raised in McLendon, you know, really important issues, human issues that, that need to be addressed, and, and of course, economic and, and liability issues for the camp, for the county. But I think we've also seen that these kinds of federal consent decrees, they, we, we can get out of them. You know, the city of Albuquerque has actually had remarkable success with their consent decree, which is not quite yet over, but considering that that really only started in the mid-20 teens, and here 10 years later, they are now looking very close to, to exiting that decree for different reasons, but a lot of similarity, you know, mental health and use of force, things that, that cross those lines, whether you're in or out of the facility. I just want to say that I really do have hope that with your help, working with you, working with county manager, our legal team, that I really do believe we can exit McLendon and leave this facility better off and in a position where that is in the past, and the facility has a new mindset and a new mentality that's very successful in this. So I look forward to your partnership there.
Madam Chairman and Member Olivas, we are in total agreement on what you've said. And, and you should know that we've met with members of, of the staff who have been involved from the county, and we've met with some of the attorneys from McLendon, and we continue to have a dialogue with them. And they, they in fact attend our meetings and, and actually participate sometimes in, in some of the discussions. I think you're right, and, and I appreciate your comments.
Commissioner Barbola.
Thank you. I just, I'm thanking Madam Chair. To Commissioner Olivas's question about, so, the, a few years ago, the state legislature passed so that there couldn't be funding APS, or not APS, education programming from the legislature can't go to people over 18. And that was a big bet to Gordon Brunel. So since then, I believe the county and state legislature and others have put in, so the education that's happening there is happening for people over 18. It's just not funded through the education, the state education funds, because educate, the state limited those to people that are 18 and over. I just want to, thanks again for this presentation. I think this is the first time that I've actually seen the presentation, like, received a presentation from DFMO, or now DFABE. As my first two years, I attended almost every meeting and was able to hear from both of you often. And I just wanted to take, if I can, a moment to ask the TIBU, when I got to visit, when I served as chair, I got to tour MDC, and I asked the staff that I was able to work with there, because this isn't always a rewarding, this isn't always rewarding in the same ways that we think of rewarding. And I asked folks there why they, and most of the folks that I met with had been there 15-plus years, and I asked them what kept them working at MDC. And I'd love to ask, because I know both of you, maybe you can say how many years you've been serving on the Detention Facility Oversight Advisory Board, and what keeps you wanting to serve?
Actually, to be honest, I didn't hear a part.
How long have you been serving on DFABE? What keeps you wanting to serve?
You know, there's a real need for improvement over there. And, and it's something we can do that can make a big difference in our community. And, and I, I think that, that, that's something that, that keeps me energized and wanting to continue to serve. You know, actually, I started out with the Public Safety Advisory Board some time back, and, and I, we've been through good times, bad times, and difficult times, and, and, and you look at what, where we're at now, and, and there's been such an incredible improvement with the work of this commission. I mean, that jail is, is in so much better shape, and, and you're all, you all deserve the credit for it. So I hope I answered the question appropriately, because incredibly, I'll be hearing aid.
If I may. In this iteration of the Detention Facility Management Advisory Board, when it was changed from, as Chairman Brasher pointed out, the Public Safety Board and the former board, now the new board, if you will, the name change anyway, I've been on the board since 2015. I was first appointed, and I've been reappointed. Thank you for your support and your, for your recognition, if you will. I enjoy being on the board. It, it, it's about public service. It's about servant leadership. It's about getting involved and doing something and helping to improve the quality of life, not only for people in the community, but also in, in the facility. It's good public policy. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both for your many years of service.
Listen, thank you. And Madam Chairman, may I just make one statement, that sometimes I'm unkind and uncharitable, and I harass the county manager, and I'm going to do better. Maybe.
She's tough. She's tough. Commissioner Benson.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more, one more.
Gentlemen, Chair Brasher and Vice Chair Martinez, thank you both. And the fact that you've voluntarily, as a board, gone from quarterly meetings to monthly meetings on a volunteer basis says a lot about your, your heart and your desire for the community to make improvements. When it comes to the McLendon lawsuit, I know you've had a huge role in that, but the MDC as an organization has as well, as so has the county manager and the attorney, because since it's a lawsuit, it's not just, well, you got to do it better, and then it just goes away. It's a constant fight. It's like climbing a mountain where you've got to be working towards some goals that just, at early on, seemed almost impossible. And we've made such amazing progress through that, and it's taken a team effort. So thank you so much. And, and MDC, you know, that's our largest budget item, such a big part of our community, and we're doing it alone. City of Albuquerque stepped away from it, and sometimes I don't blame them. It's a big, big job, and so thank you for everything that you all are doing as leaders of this board, and, and also thank you county manager. I mean, oh gosh, and, and county attorney. This McLendon lawsuit is, is no joke. It was needed, but we've made such great progress. It's a better organization because of it. So thank you.
Madam Chair and, and Commissioner, thank you for your comments. I also want to say thank you to a wonderful board. They're good, hardworking people who are really committed to working to make things better at the jail. Thank you all very much.
You know, let me just kind of say one last thing, if I may. Madam Chair and Member Benson, there's no question, when you take a look at the several domains within the McLendon lawsuit, it, it, it goes without saying that a lot of progress has been made. And I certainly wanted to commend my, my son Kenny Martinez for a job well done.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So we move on to item 8B, the Sheriff's Office Advisory Review Board Annual Report and presentation of that by the advisory board members. Judge Jewell. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's indeed an honor to be back before you again in aid of presentation of the annual report for the SOAR, the Sheriff's Office Advisory Review Board. I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity, both to serve on this board and to present this report, and asked if I might, that those SOAR members who are present join me at the podium. I would like the vice chair, Debbie Strongen, to come up. In addition, member Dr. Diane Layden accompanies us tonight as well. I think she's going to defer coming up.
She's comfortable.
And I congratulate you, Chair Baca. I know you have what it takes to be a leader intergenerationally, having been a student of your dad's at Hayes, now middle school, was junior high back in the day. We won't go that far back tonight. Indeed, I think we've turned somewhat of a corner with, with your help. And in addition to thanking you all, I want to thank and recognize our sheriff. I think I saw Sheriff Allen in the room. And his able senior staff, I, I see Under Sheriff Horeno over there, and I think I saw some others that, that I recognized as well. So we want to thank them as, as well. We've enjoyed a, a good first year with them. There is a spirit of cooperation afoot, and, and we're indeed appreciative. Vice Chair Strongen is largely responsible for the report that you have. My entreat to her was, let's abbreviate this. I don't think they want to see 40 pages, and she got it down to 20 for you all. So I'm, I'm extremely grateful to her for her leadership in pulling this report together. I do want to mention the other board members in addition to Dr. Layden and, and Vice Chair Strongen, Debbie Dodge, Elena Giachi, Joseph A. Lopez, W. James Stewart. Mr. Stewart, of course, is a sheriff's deputy out of the state of Texas, and he's been very helpful to us. So thank you for your appointment there, Commissioner Benson. In addition to Michael Wismer, who's, who's East Mountain resident and, and brings that body of information to, to us in our meetings. We meet monthly as well. And I want to thank the staff. I know that Donette Marie Maestas is here tonight. Out of county attorney's staff, we have Daniel Roberson. Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for his involvement. In addition to Atatia's staff, we have Aseben Vasquez. So we have very capable and helpful staff that has been provided to us. So we thank you all for the opportunity to, to, to be on this board. We thank you for the resources that you've provided to it. In this brief report, we've made some recommendations to the sheriff. We've made two recommendations with subparts, and three to you all. And indeed, this year, we even made some recommendations to the public. And I think the recommend, the spirit of the recommendations, if, if, if I might, is to keep doing what we're doing. The sheriff, I think, has gone a long way in The sheriff, I think, has gone a long way in improving transparency. And one of the items I'll mention is improving the crime statistics and the way they're kept and their availability to the public. And so we want to encourage continued improvement there. We want to encourage you all to fund continued improvement there. So those are some of the recommendations that we've made. I want to yield to our Vice Chair for any comments that she might want to make in aid of this report.
Well, I concur in everything Chair Jewell has said. And I think, I guess, one of the things that's in this report, which was a section prepared primarily by Dr. Layden and also Board Member Debbie Dodge concerning the Behavioral Health Unit, which is a really innovative division that Sheriff Allen has created. And he is assisted very ably by Diane Dosal. And all of this is mentioned in the report. But I think that we all agree that the sheriff is to be commended for creating this unit and taking on a responsibility that isn't traditionally the responsibility of law enforcement, to interface with communities in need in terms of mental health facilities. But, so, yeah, we would encourage funding of that effort as well, to the extent that it's needed. And I don't know, do you want to talk about that we need a new member?
One of the recommendations, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, is that you appoint a ninth member. We're, again, down a member, and so we need one. And we may be down another, okay? And so we want to make sure that you all continue to review your appointments and keep us fully staffed as a board. We appreciate those ears and voices that you all have appointed. They do good work. We're very proud of the effort that we've made. I would like to see more of the public approach us. I think, though, that we are available to them and hope that that's the comment that you hear from your constituents. Again, I wanted to be very brief in a verbal presentation. I know that you've received the report and will stand for your questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, both of you and the entire board, for your great work. Really appreciate you. Questions, anyone? Oh, yes, Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again, Judge Jewell and Vice Chair Strongen, for this report. My predecessor, Commissioner Colley, is the one who formed the board and appointed you, Judge Jewell. I couldn't have had a better appointment for District Three. I'm glad you're still serving there. Thank you for your time. Thank you all for this. I have been very appreciative. At first, I remember when I was not here yet, and I saw Commissioner Colley was doing it. I'm like, oh, another formation. But I have just been so pleased with the way you all have been really stand-up, outside of, and unapologetically and unafraid to say the things that have needed to have been said previous to our current sheriff and even during our current sheriff. So I just really think, you know, our community, we need that voice. So I'm just really grateful, I'm grateful for this. We'll look into, yeah, these recommendations look like we could fall in line really easy with them. And I think that it's so important that you all exist and that we're, you know, holding both accountable and transparent and partnership in the way you do. We could keep moving forward. And since we have such a great sheriff now, implementing so many of the requests from before, we can think innovatively, you all can think innovatively about how we continue to improve and do better. But, yeah, just thank you for your service and look forward to implementing some of these recommendations.
Anyone else? Commissioner Elias or Vice Chair Elias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo what my colleague just said about the board and the service of you all, all of the volunteers on here. I know that it can often seem a thankless job, but I can really say that it shows how much thought and effort you all put into this. And it's really important, I think, to recognize that. And also recognize that you all have put forward both positive commentary and advisory recommendations as well. But you've acknowledged the improvements that have been made. You've acknowledged where things have gone right. And that's often so important when it comes to the culture around law enforcement and policing right now, is it's important to look at the good things happening as well as the things that might need improvement. And so I really appreciate that you all put that forward and work on that. Especially the highlight that Member Layden took on the Behavioral Health Unit and the work that the sheriff's been doing there with Mr. Dosal. It's huge. It's really important, that work. And I hope that, as a commission, we can continue to fund that and double down on that where it's needed to make sure that those resources are ready and available when they're needed. And so I really appreciate that. And also the highlight that you made on the corridor plans, making sure that you all keep a focus on that and let us know what you're seeing, let us know what you're hearing. It's something that, you know, I personally support. I think it's a good thing for my district and for people that live along the central corridor and for those individuals that may be out there suffering in businesses. But, you know, you are, in many ways, our eyes and ears. So please keep your eye on that, as you mentioned in your report. And I want to lastly just highlight how lucky we are in District Five to have four members of this nine-member board, but it's actually eight. So you could say we have almost a majority there. Member Dodge, a member Layden, a member Wismer, as well as Madam Vice Chair. So I really just want to thank you all for serving. We have an amazing slate from District Five, and just, we will work on getting you some additional members. Maybe not from District Five, but if it just happens to be that way.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you both, and thank you for all your work as well. This is a volunteer board. I meet regularly with Member Stewart, who speaks so well of the communication on the entire board, regardless of law enforcement experience or whatever, the different backgrounds that each of you bring. He just praises it. And it's not an easy board, especially considering, you know, with the city of Albuquerque, the police department reports straight to the mayor, whereas in the county, the sheriff is an independently elected office. And so, and my thanks goes to Sheriff Allen as well for being open to communication and meeting with you all. And your role to bridge the community with the Sheriff's Department through the County Commission. It's a unique role, and so you do it very well, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, we've used so many superlatives about the sheriff and how fortuitous that we're here on National Law Enforcement Recognition Day. But I want to assure you all that there's an arms-length relationship, and those people that you appointed are not shy about asking the tough questions. So we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to tell you when things are going well, as well as tell you when things aren't going so well. So we appreciate that, you know, the sheriff is an elected official. And I know he appreciates the fact that we have independence from him. And that relationship remains arms-length. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item of communications is economic development. Annual Year in Review with the Regional Economic Alliance Area, Director Marcos Gonzalez.
Evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Marcos Gonzalez, Executive Development Officer for Burnetown County. This evening, we're just going to provide an overview of our year's activities, as well as Danielle Casey from Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance will provide an overview of their 2023 activities as well. So we're going to cover some economic development projects, our activity on film industry, and other program updates that we have as well. And then, please feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions, and we'll go from there. So for economic development projects, we did two housing projects this year with the north downtown area, the Caiahuerta project, and in the southeast heights, the Encino Garden redevelopment. So this will be 251 affordable housing projects, 250 affordable housing units, with 165 of them being refurbished. As well as we did four economic development projects, three of them being IRB projects for Johnson Storage and moving the Marriott Pyramid North and Array Technologies. Together, they'll retain 398 new jobs and 111 new jobs. And we also, for the first time with Burnetown County, city of Albuquerque, and the state of New Mexico, we did the GRT share project for the Maxion project, which will yield a little over 1,400 new jobs in advanced manufacturing. Heading over to film activity, film still remains very active in our county despite the Writers and the Screen Actors Guild strikes from April through November. SLAMA processed about 41 permits and location agreements. Bobby Foster Road in the Mesa del Sol area continues to be a hotspot for filming in the county as well as the east mountains and our open space. And her phone is ringing off the hook right now with everybody that's coming back to work now wanting to film. So yay film. And as you saw in the Golden Globes, Oppenheimer took a bunch of awards. So tons of films in New Mexico are winning awards, which is great. And then, next to our Brownfield program, which is headed up by Carolyn here, we are 98% spent down on our $600,000 grant that we received in 2020. This is to do Phase One testing and Phase Two testing for properties. We primarily set the bridge corridor when we applied, but we've done it all over the county. And this, we are now going after a $1.5 million grant to do more testing, which can hopefully lead to some more redevelopment. So the Commercial Rurality Group really loves us, because you get free Phase One testing paid for by the federal government. So it works out. So we'll continue to work on that. In other activity, we are still operating the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So since 2021, we've helped out over nearly, over almost 2,800 households and dispersed almost $14.5 million. We are still operating the program, but beginning to wind it down as we are running out of money. We also did the Premium Pay Employee Program this last year with just over 2,800 employees and close to $5.8 million being distributed. This includes the numbers both for the District Four and District Two programs that added in for the additional piece there, and so we're winding this program down as well. And we also have our marketing program. So we continue to thank you for giving us all the good programs and businesses that you want to share about in your various districts. So our YouTube show is becoming quite a little following, which is good. People out there seem like, hey, we've seen you on YouTube. I'm like, cool, dude, thanks for watching. And the businesses love getting that highlight. And when we call them, they're like, hey, we want to have you on the TV show. They're like, and your commissioner recommended it. They're like, what? They know I'm here? Yeah, I guess. It's like, come on down to the studio. And Paul and his team do a great job. And our Edge continues to be a great way to get out information as well through our newsletter. And actually, we brought back, since COVID, we hadn't done too many business summits. We did our first one this year since 2019, and it was during the Red Ribbon Week. And we kind of looked at the Fendel crisis, but with the business lens. And so Commissioner Benson was chairing that one. And we are still getting various businesses that are asking for more information and sharing that information. So it's going out further than just that week. And so we continue to want to continue to do that type of business summits going forward in 2024. In terms of our pipeline going forward, we're still working on some various programs on how we can help our small businesses, community, especially, like we talked about, Commissioner Elias, and our East Central Corridor, our I-40 Trade Port Corridor, which we got a grant from the US DOT for, we continue to work very hard with. In fact, Carolyn's going to be going to the Port of LA here in a couple of weeks to meet with them. And they were touting at national conferences, international conferences, they've been talking about how the Trade Port Corridor and I-40 is really going to be helping out for the decarbonization of the Port of LA as well. We have a few new affordable housing projects on the docket, including the ones working through the Housing Collaborative as well, and several new job creation projects that we plan to bring forward in the next quarter. They'll be meeting with the commission on it as well. So 2024 is going to be great. And so I can't say that this is all me. This is a great, fabulous team. So thankful to have a great team. Carolyn Tobias is here this evening as Economic Development Manager, SLAMA Lenz. Couldn't attend this evening. Special Projects Coordinator, Swin Chavis, who's our office manager, helps us and keeps us all on track. But without this great team, we couldn't have this great economic development team we have here at the county. So thank you. Stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. Really appreciate your work. Any questions for the director? Commissioner Benson.
Madam Chair, yeah, thank you. All of you in the audience who've seen this, this is a small and mighty team. And you do so much work. Thank you so much. You're generating, you're creating jobs, you're blocking and tackling for businesses, and blocking and tackling to bring businesses in. Same to you, Carolyn. Thank you so much. You guys are amazing. Keep doing it. Maxion, I mean, that's going to, we need to get them here. We need to get their doors open and have them start hiring. That's going to be a major employer. The more employers we have in our city, the better things get. People will have less, fewer people on Medicaid, insurance. So Unum H won't be under strain as much, right? So wages continue to rise. It just spurs economic activity. So, man, keep it up. Well done, and keep fighting the good fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Gonzalez and team, Carolyn. I just thank you so much for this report, for the work you do. Ditto to everything that Commissioner Benson said. I did want to ask about the emergency rental. You said it's winding down and/or that it's fully out of funding right now?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Barboa, so in terms of the different pockets in the metro area, so the city of Albuquerque's program is run through the state of New Mexico, and they are out of funds. So they have stopped operating probably back in October last year, I believe. We, in the unincorporated area where we operate, we still have funds, but we are only funding at this time people that are asking for additional requests and have stopped taking new applications for funding. So we still have additional funds to fund for those that need additional assistance.
Thank you so much. I just want to highlight that program, and thank you for leading that innovative program and making changes, adjustments. When we said we need paper applications, you moved. I just really think for being, responding to the needs and meeting folks where they're at so they could get that funding. I think of so much, I'm on all these other, I'm on the Homeless Corning Council and everywhere. Everybody's talking about unsheltered folks and homelessness. Like, this program caught people on that brink, and we don't talk about that enough, right? Where they're one paycheck away, and this program actually saved them from us being in this place where we're trying to, in an emergency situation, house them. So thank you so much for your leadership on this program, for your team's work to make it accessible to our county residents. And if there's recommendations about how we might be able to continue, I know we don't, those were largely out of ARPA dollars, so we don't have that kind of funding. But if... But if, you know, if there's ideas from you all running this program about how we can continue to, or maybe there's other ways that I'm unaware of that we're trying to catch those people that are on the brink and keep them in their homes rather than trying to find emergency shelter for them.
And just a couple of notes on that, too, Commissioner Barboa. Would be remiss to say that we have had over, since operating the program since 2021, we've had probably close to 21 different temps on the program that have actually been meeting with folks. And we also had a third party that would do a lot of the Housing Stability Service and meeting people where they're at. So not just making, having people come downtown, even though a lot of people do, but at the community centers, at a coffee shop, wherever it may be, to help them get their application in. And our application was in like 40 different languages or something like that. So really trying to meet people where they're at and give them the help that they need. And actually, we are still attending the court every day for folks that are in the unincorporated area that may have had an application or anything like that. And we've, over the last couple of years, were in the court every day, having somebody there listen in and be able to comment with the judges and working with them on the eviction prevention, making sure that somebody wasn't getting evicted when the program was there to help them. And we've kind of been staying in touch with that group in our community that's really spurred out and being able to provide some more eviction prevention pieces. And so we're still continuing to meet, even as our funds wind down, continuing to meet on how we can kind of continue housing stability pieces as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Vice Chair Olivias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for your team and these exciting projects that you presented about, but also the stuff that we're working on, talking in my district about the East Central Corridor and how we can highlight the amazing development opportunities up there in an area that is just ripe for redevelopment, lots of underutilized and maybe in some cases completely unutilized land for, for housing, for, you know, food halls, for all kinds of new exciting development in an established area with infrastructure. I just really look forward to seeing what your team can do because I think with that on your radar, I think it's, it's ripe for, for a really big move by your office. But also the other things that you're helping me on, economic development issues with, with infrastructure and rural areas and things like that. So as Commissioner Benson said, you are a small but mighty team and you have a really diverse portfolio and I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll transition to Danielle Casey with Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance, so the extension of the team as well. A lot of recruitment and still a tiny bit of her thunder here. She actually can give you down to district level data on what's happening. So if you want that, she got a lot of the data points that we put in, that we put in for like Housing Collaborative and for other points. Danielle's team actually really helps us with finding those data points and a lot of the data pieces that we need for grant applications and components like that. So she's been great to work with. And I'll turn the table over to Danielle.
Steal the thunder away all you want. It's, it's an honor. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. It really is an honor to be a partner on contract as an extension of the Burnaleo County Economic Development Team. And, and I want to really kind of specifically call out the county as being a tremendous leader in the work that we're doing. You've stepped out ahead and been a great partner and really get the importance of regional partnerships in economic development. So thank you. I've got more slides for you, but I'll, I'll be brief. As you all know, our, our mission is really to lead and execute strategies as an external marketing arm and business attraction team member with the county and with communities across the four county region. Couple of the things that we have launched, you may see a familiar face on the slide here. We've launched new, really exciting industry advisory councils and government advisory councils that never existed through our nonprofit, even though we've been around for 60 years. Didn't exist until about a year and a half ago. So thank you, Commissioner Benson, for stepping up and really serving in that capacity and continuing to do that for us. We have a public sector advisory council that has key discussions and helps lead us and inform us on what's going on. This is important because I bring all this back to the full area board of directors, which really sets our, it sets our guidepost and what we're doing in our implementation every year. Our economic development professionals are a key advisory group. Every month, we have a meeting with all the economic developers in the region, with communities that are engaged with us. This keeps us on the same page and hopefully working together and advancing our initiatives, speaking from the same playbook. A playbook is actually an idea that Marcos has that we are still working on and we're going to get that done by the summer, a regional economic development playbook for business. Just an example of some of the great collaborative efforts, we were able to go down to the Village of Las Lunas last year and have a great tour of the Metaph facility. And remember, the commissioner was really amazed at how large it is. And you don't get a chance to do those things that often, especially in other communities. We also have industry advisory councils on competitiveness, bioscience and healthcare, tech and innovation. And they're all each advancing different initiatives and ideas, really being advocates, voices, and informing us on what's most critical to their industry sectors. Very excited about the work we're going to be doing in 2024 for bio life sciences, really helping the bioscience authority at the state level to have a very, very good, a good presence at Bio International, which is a massive, it's about a 25,000 person trade show that we need to have a statewide presence on in a big way. Some of the outcomes and deliverables, without getting into a massively detailed level, I want to make sure you're all aware, we do publish quarterly reports on our website and to everyone in the community on a quarterly basis, that's why they're quarterly. Our annual report for 2023 will be available in about 30 days after we pull all of our data together for the year and make it look really pretty. We will share a copy with all of you. Some of the locates and expansions, these are going to be familiar for all of you, all of the ones that we, and we're missing one on here, it just fit better on the slide this way, but the ones that we had an impact on, we, I like to call it a material, a material influence. So did our assistance help bring it over the finish line, whether it was us 80% of the way or 5% of the way, but enough to where we can certainly claim contribution. One that's, the only one here that's not actually within the county is Arcosa, which is also a significant facility down in Belen. So your regional leadership also helped us support that. And that's actually the facility that President Biden visited earlier this year. So really put our region on the map. This is some of the data Marcos mentioned. We can, if you would like to see this offline, happy to provide it. For the purpose of the slides, this looked prettier. But important for you to know that in our regional responses, we submitted properties 223 different times from the, from the county that are within the county to client opportunities over the last year. The county obviously holds the highest share of property submittals. And we've got some hot districts. We're going to work on making District Five just as hot as the others. I know it's coming. And we have a lot of ideas. We are advocating, have a leave for, for site readiness investment at the state level to help drive that forward and think about infrastructure. I'm really honored to have been invited to join the Trade Port Corridor Group and be a voice on regional economic development along with the county. So all of those things do contribute. These come from our economic impact models. Happy to break these down offline as well if there are questions. But to the region, five project announcements in 2023. We're not taking credit actually, so you don't see more because we're not taking credit for Maxion. That went straight to the end user. I do believe that the work we do regionally marketing makes, makes an impact on there. But I'm also pretty conservative on what we take credit for or put in our lists. But that's, that's going to be huge. That actually doesn't include the impacts from Maxion. Kudos to all of you. There was a tremendous amount of work on your team and from the county getting that over the finish line. And we're all gonna, all gonna win and be better because of it. But these are some of those outcomes specific to the county. And then we also have outcomes when, when you, oh, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. These are the region, sorry. And then these are specific to the county and the locates we assisted on with the county, the new leads and conversions. So for example, new leads, 94 new opportunities that we looked at, vetted, responded to, provided data to, 43 of those that were converted to the project level that we're now tracking on projects or were, were announced. And, and you'll see all the, all the total numbers there. Really proud of that. We did quite a bit of programming. We are also a nonprofit. So in addition to our contract services, we got to raise money in the community and keep the business community supporting us, which is more than 80% of our funding, the private business community. We did two site selector tours in the region. We've only ever historically done one. So that's a direct value of more than $40,000 in expense of doing that, plus all the staff time and expertise. Those went really well. We were a big player in the Governor's Conference on Economic Development in the fall. We hold our board retreat and town hall and bring folks from around the region together. We've had many quarterly events. We also were honored to help support the Assessor Symposium along with other nonprofits in the region and associations to educate folks and have a dialogue. And then obviously our annual dinner and 505 awards. We also do free programs. So it's important to note that as a 501(c)(3), we do free educational programming several times a year. We move it around the region. Anybody can come. So if you know anybody, whether it's your grandma, your nosy neighbor, you know, or a high school student looking for maybe career ideas, send them to one of our programs. We'd love to have them. We do a lot of training and industry analysis reports, so market reports on different industries. We updated our CBRE Talent Report. This is a tremendous report. It's gotten great traction. We have employers that use this talent and industry profile to attract new, new workforce into their companies. I'm going to go very quickly on our pipeline. We share this. I'd just like you all to see what your economic developers are seeing monthly and what we share with all, all of our board members. This is a current snapshot today of the aggregate volume of the opportunities we're seeing, how they're coming into us, into the community. And no, no surprise, I think to any of you, when we're seeing the announcements we're seeing, that out of our pipeline, manufacturing is making almost 97% of the share of potential capital investment, which is why site readiness and infrastructure is such a critical issue. Speaking to the choir, I'm sure. And then if you're interested in where that breaks out in terms of industry in the manufacturing subsector, huge amount of that potential opportunity still is in the renewable energy sector. And then also, I like to point out, I know that, a little hard to read, but pharmaceutical manufacturing is a big piece of that right there, 8.5%, kind of in the middle of the, in the middle of the row there. Our key priorities for Area over the next 12 months, again, site readiness. So advocating, providing data and really making a case for the criticality of that investment and the return that will happen if we're able to proactively figure out ways of getting infrastructure in place, increasing, continuing to ever increase our lead generation on behalf of our communities. We want to work on some ESG ready initiatives. European firms are required to be ESG ready and to report on this. If we can show this is environmental, social and governance for companies, if we can show them that we can help them with this reporting, we may get a lot more looks for companies that we're going to make life easier for. Foreign direct investment. And then I mentioned that regional playbook. I'll blame Marcos. It's his brilliant idea. And so finally, what will be our key to future success? I'm quoting a site consultant that spoke at one of our events last year, that it is now more and more an integrated system. It was taken for granted before that you would have sites and that you would have workforce and economic development. And now all of the economic developers out there have to be very involved in talent, education, entrepreneurship, infrastructure, and of course, real estate and quality of place. So not only do we all have to be great economic development teams, we also have to have great products. So we are doing our work from Area's standpoint and helping with both. And last but not least, if anybody's watching or interested or if you know anybody, we really want to get input, as much input as we possibly can on business retention and expansion. This is a bit of a temperature on what businesses are seeing, what their challenges are, what the hardest occupations are for them to train on. So we can aggregate that data and share it with our partners and create solutions. And we, we're going to probably close the survey in about another week and then compare that data to data we collected during COVID. So stay tuned. Thank you so very much. Again, it's an honor to be a partner and be here. I would stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your work. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
No questions, Danielle. But just to comment, you, you won't take credit for Maxion, but I'm going to give you credit. I mean, it was a team effort, the county, the city, the state. But Area was definitely a part of it. Since you've come on to Area, you've changed the name to Area. That's great. She's turned it into more of a regional economic alliance. So it's Albuquerque Regional Economic Alliance. So we're partnering from Belen all the way up through Rio Rancho, out to Edgewood. And, and you've got strength in numbers there. And, you know, true economic development is when dollars come into the state from outside of the state. If you're, if you open up a shop and you're just selling internally to local residents, that's great. We need those. But that's not growing the economy. The economy grows by bringing money outside in. So whether that's you're selling green chili over to Colorado where you really need it, or if you're bringing, if you're selling products internationally, where the money's coming in. And so that's what you're doing. And you've, you've taken this and made it such an active engine. Whereas, you know, I wouldn't call it passive before, but now it is so active trying to bring businesses here. And those businesses are bringing jobs. And I, you guys probably get tired of me saying it, but I want my kids to have job opportunities here and not have to look for them outside of New Mexico. And, and you guys are really helping to do that. And it's, it's great to see how, how much activity you've generated in the year and a half that you've been here. So keep, keep it up. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for being here. Thank you all, to the whole team.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now we move on to public comment. Each person has two minutes and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And to maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professional and respect for everyone, speakers must adhere to the two minute time limit. Julianne, do we have a list, please?
Madam Chair, we have eight signed up this evening with one appearing virtually. We'll start off with in-person speakers, starting with John Veltre, followed by Ramona Goldsby, followed by Victoria Martin.
Julie, did you pass out the information I brought? Thank you very much. Good evening, commissioners. John Veltre, New Mexican. From an election integrity viewpoint, as we move into 2024, which is an election year, big year, tonight I want to talk about the 2020 Presidential Trump Executive Summary Fraud Report released last week, specific to five swing states, Georgia, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, Arizona, and Michigan, complete with 98 legal footnotes and references. So don't take my word for it. This is information that was given to me. And from an elective, election integrity standpoint, I have a lot of interest in trying to make our elections as good as they can be. And I've been doing this for the past 16 months here in Burnaleo. What these five, you might ask, what, what do these states have in common with New Mexico? Well, it's a lot of the activities I have shared over the last 16 months with you. Voter ID, drop boxes, inefficient or uncertified pieces of electronic equipment, ballots, absentee ballots, chain of command issues, voter roll problems, handling of our seniors in our nursing homes, mishandling of early mail-in votes via the UPS after deadlines have passed where votes were counted. Proof of many precincts having over 100% of its registered voters that voted. I don't know how that happens. Proof of no documentation regarding chain of custody. Proof of thousands of unique votes removed from the voter history file while unique voters were added tens of thousands of times and the list goes on. The information provided is an extensive factual summary highlighting the five swing states that talks about, again, everything that has been happening here, I believe, in New Mexico as well as across the nation in, in many instances around election integrity. This is why my top two goals in 2024 are still to remove the electronics, go back to paper ballots where we can have them counted by people, winners determined by the end of the day. And anyway, and voter ID. Thank you very much. Yeah, the two minutes go a lot faster than the last three speakers. It took an hour. Thank you.
Ramona Goldsby, followed by Victoria Martin, followed by Linda Barber.
Ramona Goldsby, Chair Baca, commissioners, Happy New Year. I want to commend you on the transparency and the boards that have spoken. I appreciate the fact that the citizens of Burnaleo County are willing to stand up and go and help with the governance. I want to report that 2024 is going to be an exciting year. I'm sure Ms. Stover's all geared up for this, being a big election year. We are, I am very excited to let you know that we are working towards voter We are, I am very excited to let you know that we are working towards voter turnout. And we are very excited about it. We have some national organizations that are going to start meeting in different areas in New Mexico. And hopefully, within the next month, we'll have a meeting with a large organization that's never had a meeting here before. So we're really looking forward to that. And what we want to do is empower people to get involved in their government, whether it be on a board, whether it be just coming out to vote, whether it be calling or contacting their commissioner to let them know what's going on. That's what we need. We need people involved in our system, because without that, our system fails. That's just like at school. If parents aren't involved, the children suffer. Well, it's the same way with us. So we're really excited about that opportunity. And I am looking forward to, I'm going to kind of switch here, to Maxion actually hiring someone from New Mexico since they decided to choose the CEO from California. And hopefully, their first quarter reports will look better than their fourth. Have a good year. Thanks.
Victoria Martin, followed by Linda Barber, followed by Jack Kreider.
Last month, I attended a hearing and saw a video clip of Catherine Brooke. I quote, "We, many of us, believe that all the legislature was duly elected." I agreed with Catherine, but I paused and listened to the rest of the video. I was wrong. I was not in agreement with District One's representative for that setting, a county commissioners' meeting. I thought she had said "duly," D-U-A-L-L-Y, not "dooley," as a lawyer would say. On another note, Maggie Toulouse Oliver's sidekick, Ivy Soto, Mr. Vandelay Solutions himself, self-appointed head coach of New Mexico Clerks, was in attendance at this hearing. But upon hearing the judge's order, I wasn't surprised at all. Ivy Soto had good news to report back, smiling all the way out of the building to no one in particular. There is enough evidence to consider that the two prior crops of legislators and candidates were run through a corrupted process. The numbers tell us that Senator Ben Ray Lujan was bumped into office with the help of electronic magic. The analysis we have done, and that many people, a lot smarter than me, have done, bears that out. And the reactions from the possible phonies tells me we are probably not wrong. You have been provided a book, a copy of the book, "The Case to Impeach and Imprison Joe Biden," by Mike McCormick. In his acknowledgements, he states, "But most of all, I want to thank God for guiding me through every step of this fight against evil that has infiltrated our great country."
Linda Barber, Jack Kreider, Laura Ingram. Okay, then we'll proceed to our online speaker, Mr. Heraldo Cionello.
Did you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good evening and blessed, blessed New Year to all of you, Madam Chair and county commissioners for serving. I'm Dr. Heraldo Cionello, as an alternative health doctor and minister. A waited nine years to be a naturalized U.S. citizen legally, are you all truly aware of what's happening at our southern border? U.S. senators Cornyn and Cruz suggested that many of the so-called gotaways run from law enforcement because they are smuggling illegal drugs like fentanyl into the country. However, both expressed greater concern about the possibility of radicalized terrorists entering the country illegally across the southern border with Mexico. What happened in Israel on October 7th is a reminder that terrorist organizations can strike at any time, they said. And while we know that 1 September 11, 2001, 19 terrorists killed 3,000 Americans, we know that there have been hundreds or more of people on the terrorist watch list that have been detected at the border. Cruz added that border patrol agents were frustrated beyond belief at Biden administration policies that led to illegal immigrants being released after the agents had risked their lives to detain them. Potential terrorists are attempting to cross our southern border. In September alone, 18 illegal immigrants on the terror watch list were caught at the border. The attack on Israel should serve as a warning as to why we must secure the border. That said, we all know that elections have consequences. Imagine Hamas, and by the way, the word Hamas in Hebrew means violence. So imagine Hamas terrorists infiltration into Bernal County and even San Jose County. But are are our chief law enforcement sheriffs and their deputies prepared to protect you, your families, and your constituents? Proverbs 22, verse 3 says, "A prudent person perceives danger and takes precautions. The foolish simpleton goes blindly on and suffers the consequences."
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Then we have one more speaker, Ms. Mary Ingham.
Hello, Commissioners and we, the people. Whoops, well, that was quick.
No, go ahead.
So my name is Mary Ingham. I ran for public office and had an opportunity to meet many wonderful folks in our community. I met a 70-year-old man who now owns his mother's small house. He'd worked all of his life in fairly low-paying jobs, and he's living on a small retirement and social security. He's struggling with his living expenses and his ever-increasing property taxes. He asked, "Why can't the government ever help hard-working, responsible senior citizens by not increasing property taxes and putting pressures on property owners to pay for ever-expanding programs?" On a similar note, a 37-year-old man released from MDC in August was, he was not able to access any adult education in MDC because he already had a GED, even though he really wanted to do that. He also reported that he had a hard time getting a whole book. Can you imagine reading half a novel? That's really discouraging. He's currently living with his parents and would be homeless if it were not for that. He's working full-time at a fast food restaurant and buying a used car to get to work. He visited the housing authority and was told that because he was working full-time and making about $2,000 a month, or $24,000 a year, which isn't too much, they couldn't help him. Have any of us tried to rent an apartment with $24,000 annual income? He was told the same thing for any food assistance. So I would like to encourage the Commission to consider programs to help our citizens who are working hard, have jobs, and are doing the right thing, to not be told that they should go to halftime so that they could get help with housing. That doesn't make sense. So I think too often, we too often encourage people to not work and not take personal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that concludes public comment. Thank you all. We are now on item nine, approval of our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for item 9A and item 9B?
Yes, ma'am. Item 9A2 is FR 2024-2. B1 is FR 2024-3.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you. Item 10, adoption of ordinance amendments to the county code, technical services. Madam Clerk, can you please provide an ordinance number?
Yes, ma'am. 10A is ordinance 2024-1.
We have Brian Lopez here to explain this, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, good evening. Brian Lopez, I'm the Technical Services Director. I started losing my voice later on this afternoon, so just please bear with me. I would like to present my item for, to adopt amendments to Chapter 38, Article 2, flood damage prevention ordinance. We last brought this item before the Commission on October 10th of '23. The amendments were published for 30 days, and there were no public comments during this designated timeframe. As previously discussed, this amendment is needed as our current standards reflect the community rating recommended minimum standards in use since 1992, with the intent of providing the public with a 10% discount on their flood insurance premiums. For this item, we're asking the Commission to adopt the amendments to Chapter 38, Section 38-101 general standards and Section 38-102 specific standards. These general standards and specific standards allow the county floodplain administrator to administer and implement the article by granting or denying development permit applications in accordance with FEMA studies and historical data. The community rating system program now has a prerequisite requiring one foot of free board for all residential, non-residential, and manufactured housing. These particular amendments will include all attendant utilities, including ductwork must also have one foot of free board. And these minimum requirements are to remain in Class 8 or possibly to improve to Class 7 or better as we move forward. For this, we're asking the BCC to approve adoption of the amendments to Chapter 38. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
And first, I'd like to say this was advertised as a public hearing, and so we are convening a public hearing. Is anyone signed up to speak?
Madam Chair, there are no speakers for the public hearing item.
Thank you, Julianne. Any questions of Mr. Lopez? So I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Commissioner?
Thank you.
All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Item 11, adoption of resolution, financial, the Finance Division, opioid funding, budget, and appropriation. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. 11A, FR 2024-4.
Thank you. And DCM Shirley Reagan to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager for Finance. I'm here to present an item for accepting and budgeting some opioid money that we received from the AG's office. So on December 15th, 2023, the county received its first distribution of $17,989,805.02 from the State of New Mexico Office of the Attorney General based on the opioid settlement payments it received as a result, I mean, received as of November 30th, 2023. The Office of the Attorney General collects the payments and for the, and distributes, let me back up. The Office of the Attorney General collects the payments to distribute to participating local governments the opioid settlement funds and intends to distribute those funds semi-annually based on what they received the prior six months. So the motion before you is to approve financial resolution, accepting and budgeting of the funds from the State of New Mexico Office of the Attorney General for the opioid settlement distribution number one in the amount of $17,989,805.02.
Thank you. I move approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved, but before discussion, Madam County Manager is here also in a related, obviously very closely related, to provide an update on our AR 2023-105 resolution about planning and expenditure of these funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. Vice Chair. So I, yes, I did want to provide you with an update that I promised you. So since the approval of AR 2023-105, my staff has been dedicated to finding an external entity to help with the county and the city to devise a strategic plan for use of the opioid funding. And so to that end, the county and city team members have, they've met with the Invive Solutions Group in November of 2023. So Invive Solutions is based in Albuquerque and is working with the state, but it does not have a state contract, a state-purposed contract. So therefore, we were, we needed to seek a contract with Invive. In order to do that, we would need to do a request for proposal to enter into an IGA with the county and the city of Albuquerque to share the estimated cost. It was to about, to the tune of about $250,000. So Invive Solutions collaborates closely with organizations to craft and execute impactful health and human service initiatives from project conceptualization and design to full implementation. And Invive works hand-in-hand with teams and/or providers and provides expert advice that spans the entire project lifecycle. So the county and city teams also met with Vital Strategies on Monday, just yesterday. So we included Gilbert Ramirez. We felt, I think the meeting was originally on Friday, but we wanted to make sure that Gilbert Ramirez from the city was included. And Vital Strategies is putting together a proposal for our team on how best we might consider moving forward with a strategic plan. Vital Strategies is a global health organization that works with governments and civil society in 73 countries to design and implement evidence-based strategies that tackle their most pressing public health concerns. The organization helps governments strengthen their public health systems to contend with the most important and difficult health challenges. Vital Strategies brings the best of public health thinking to design solutions that can scale rapidly and improve the lives of millions of people. So so once the two proposals are received, the city and county are in agreement on the best course forward, and an IGA is in place. I will have more details on how we intend to move forward and then the next update, to update you in the next coming months. So it's my, in understanding the crisis in our community and our jail and our detox facilities, I know that time is of the essence. And so we're going to rely on this, whoever we choose, to help guide us on how we move forward to expand this funding. And again, this is in accordance with your wishes, with the resolution that was, it was AR 2023-105 that was passed by the Commission. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I stand for questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Barbo, and then Commissioner Levis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, County Manager and Director Shirley Reagan, for the update. And it's great to hear this update and that we have two proposals pending. Excited for that. I know I just have to say out loud, right, to not, when we're considering these proposals, that so often I've seen over a course of 20 years, that prevention and intervention strategies are often left behind because the need for treatment is so huge and big and takes up all the room. But we can't forget also intervention and prevention strategies. So just wanted to say that, and thank you for your leadership in getting us these proposals. I look forward to seeing what we end up with.
Thank you. I like New Mexicans say what we land up with. Commissioner Levis, or Vice Chair Levis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam County Manager, for coming before us to talk about this as we appropriate quite a large sum to our opioid settlement fund. And I do think it's critical that we move quickly on this. I know that your team is doing that, and in watching the city council meeting last night, it's clear that our partners on the council are just as interested in this as we are. And it's really hopeful that we see the city administration through Mr. Ramirez, along with our administration and our behavioral health folks, working in partnership. I've had several other somewhat unrelated behavioral health meetings where it's very clear that the county and the city administration, in my opinion, are working more closely together than they have in quite some time on these behavioral health issues. So really huge commendations to you, to the mayor's team, to the council, to everybody involved for stepping up and recognizing the importance of collaboration, which is what this resolution is all about. Ideally, we don't want this money to sit there for the entire year that it is, you know, able to through the resolution. We want to do this as quickly as possible, and I really hope that with these partners, whether it's Invive, or Vital Strategies, or somebody else that comes out of, out of left field, if we can find somebody that's qualified and able to do this, it's so important that we're able to move quickly. It was discussed in the council meeting last night, I think it was Councilor Penya, that talked about, we already have a lot of studies, right? We already have a lot of information. It's not completely up to date, of course. We know that the fentanyl pandemic that we have going on is real, and it's changing the landscape, has already changed the landscape. So there are changes, and there is need to take another look. But, you know, we've got the gap analysis, we've got the draft strategic plan, we've got a lot of got a lot of behavioral health work already out there, and I just hope that whoever this contractor is can lean into that and move quickly to comply with what's in the resolution, but do it quickly and efficiently so that we can get these funds into the community where they're needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. County Manager, can you tell me kind of what the timeframe goal is? Because I'm hearing quickly, and I agree, but when we initially passed the ordinance to move these funds out of county authority and into a joint commission, the rationale is that we want to make sure that this is a long-term investment, we don't want to rush into this. We're dealing with more prevention than just treatment, because if it was just treatment, bam, we could spend it all right now. So, just for clarity, what, as you understand it, just so I can understand better, what's the timeframe for moving forward with the consultants and then jointly moving together with the city?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so we have up to twelve months, but we're not going to wait the twelve months. I'm going to do my very, very best, and I'm really, I'm super confident that with our staff and with the staff at the city, that we can move this forward quickly. Because you're right, time is of the essence. We have immediate needs, as I had said before, at the jail, at the youth services center in our community. We've got folks from Serenity Mesa here who do an outstanding job, and we want to support them using the, our opioid funds. And then we also have our CARES campus, and so the city has their needs as well. So I'm intending to move forward as quickly as we possibly can, and I'm confident that we can, we can do that with our great staff and with the city staff. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one last comment. Madam Chair, Madam Manager, thank you for coming forward, and thank you, Shirley. This is a really important thing that we are dealing with in the community, and that's why it is so important that we're working together with the city on this planning. And although we want, we don't want this money to sit, we have money coming in over a period of, what is it, ten years, I believe? And it's going to be a lot of money. So it's a balancing act of moving forward, but doing it wisely and embracing the community. So these, this effort with this strategic planning really needs, I can't overstate what the commissioners have already said about being really creative in the use of this one-time funding, reaching out to our communities and asking them, where have you been impacted and how can we creatively use this one-time money? Because it isn't recurring, so we can do some things that are really impactful. So that's just my, you've heard me say it before, but that's my little soapbox, so thank you for being here.
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to add too, I just can't thank the city council enough in speaking about great partnerships for their one-point-five million that they dedicated to the MDC. That's one of the immediate needs that I had expressed to you that we so desperately need, especially with the amazing partnership we have with University of New Mexico Hospital. So just want to thank you all, and again, wanted to thank the city and the city council for their, for all their support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Look forward to your continuing reports on this. And it has been moved and seconded, so unless there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, eleven B, Parks and Recreation and Open Space, the Trisco Asequia Madre Master Plan. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. AR twenty-two-four dash five.
Thank you. And we have Mari and Richard.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Richard Meadows here with Technical Services, and Mari Sembanya with Open Space. And we're going to do a little presentation on the Trisco Asequia Madre Master Plan, which we are asking for adoption tonight. And I'm going to go ahead and present the first part, and then Mari, the remaining part. So this property, it's up there at, on the north side of Central, at the river, at the Bosque, and this is the headwaters of where the historic Asequia, Trisco Asequia starts from the river and goes down into the South Valley. It's a very, as I said, historic, it's hundreds of years, and it's a very significant culturally, environmentally, in a lot of ways, this is an important property for the county, but we're partnering with a lot of other agencies. We're partnering with the Water Authority, with the City of Albuquerque Open Space, with the Asequias Association. Who else are we?
Conservancy District.
They, oh, I can't forget that one, the Conservancy District. Thank you. So those are our major partners, as you can see from the map. On the, sort of the east side of the Trisco lateral is the property that belongs to MRGCD, and that's, that's the phase one that we're presenting tonight. The west side of that lateral is City of Albuquerque property. That'll be a later phase that we haven't tackled yet. So let's, so, project goals and priorities, connections to all the different wonderful assets that we have in this area. Besides the Bosque, there's the Biopark, there's trails, there's open space, all these different things that we want to connect to. Celebration of culture, of our great history in the South Valley and in this area, education of the public about the environment, about how we use our irrigation systems, how we grow our food, stewardship of the land, and especially in relation with all these different partners and communities. Project timeline, so we started this project a couple of years ago, and doing outreach with the community. We did all types, we had a charrette, we had a community event there at the site, we had presentations, neighborhood meetings, and so forth. So it's been about two years in that process. And I'll go ahead and turn that over to Mari.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening. So continuing on this trajectory, as you imagine in the public process, participants express concern for trash dumping, personal safety, vehicle vandalism, encampments. They also brought up the need for improved trail surfaces, clear signage, better parking and circulation. Some of the opportunities that emerged from the discussion were to implement ADA access to trail connections, connections also to adjacent neighborhoods and amenities, such as the Biopark, which was mentioned, reaching out to schools, and promoting Asequia and habitats, stewardship and education, and implementation of site enhancements. The consultants investigated zoning, ownership, current management, cultural and historic elements, environmental conditions, access and connectivity, water network, utilities, and economic planning. Beginning with the community design workshop and continuing through the spring and summer of twenty-twenty-two, the design team worked to illustrate design scenarios based on the vision and ideas of the partners and community, as well as site conditions. So you see before you now this conceptual design. This site in the yellow combines the elements from the three conceptual scenarios. The four categories of initial improvements will guide decision and priorities about which amenities to design and construct first. To share a little bit about that timeline generally, the engineering and design is proposed to begin this spring, continuing with site clearing, testing and parking area improvements into the fall. Winter will see trail connections, the beginning of landscape, irrigation and restoration, taking us to the fall of twenty-twenty-five. Thereafter, landscape features, interpretive signage, and furnishings will complete this phase. The total project cost of this phase is approximately nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand and has been divided into three sub-phases. The funding is coming largely from legislative appropriations and a one-time allocation from the county. Thank you. The significance of this project is that in partnership, it strengthens our network of green and open spaces. The impact is that we maintain this landscape across the county. So all of the projects that you've reviewed for open space and green spaces, these are a network. And I think the Asequia really exemplifies that because itself is a network, is significant as a historic and cultural amenity, I think, as understood by everyone. This is a really unique project because we are incorporating input from different county agencies, and of course, the public. And, you know, as mentioned before in our previous update from economic development, you know, not only are these spaces for physical and mental wellness, but also for economic wellness. So this is a continued supportive infrastructure and spaces that really contribute to our community development. So with that, we ask for support of this plan and support to authorize County Manager to assist in implementation of it. And with that, we stand for questions.
I'd like to make a quick statement and then open it up for questions. This is a real important project to me. This is a celebration of place. This is such a unique place. It's where Route sixty-six crosses the Rio Grande. So the Asequia Madre is the ditch, the Asequia that comes off of the river, the main river. But as Mari said, this is a real connection, it's a real system of these Asequias. And this idea here is to have an outdoor space that we protect, but that we bring our youth in to become the next stewards of our land, the protectors of our Asequias, the farming community and the Asequia communities, understanding that it brings life, water is life. And so the partnership between the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, the Water Authority, the county and the city is also that connection. So it's just extremely exciting to me that we're moving this forward, and I thank you for your work, and thank you for working in our community. And then lastly, Mari, the importance of the economic, this is really a catalyst, I think, for economic development going up west-central. It connects to the Biopark on the east side of the river here, but let's bring people over the river to the west side and invest in our environment, but invest in our economy as we improve it and move up the hill, up west-central. So thank you all for being here. Any questions for the team? Commissioner Barbo.
I have a question, just so much as an appreciation. Thank you, County, thank you, Madam Chair, and Mari and Richard Meadows, and I know we met earlier with some of the community groups working on this, Esos and Santiago Mayestas. I just want to say thank you as somebody who, my grandfather, my family's on my dad's side, has been lived off the Asequias, right, as part of our living there in Pajarito Road. And, you know, uncles have been my adormos, and our family has just celebrated the, and so growing up with that culture, I'm just so thankful that there's ways that we're making sure future generations have access to that history, that culture, that piece of our community that is so important, but also that we're always honoring that past and the expertise of our communities, our local farmers. So just thank you, thank you so much for this work.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Richard and Mari, thank you for bringing this item here. One-hundred-and-ten percent support this. It may be far from my district, but it's such an important project in a beautiful place that our community can and should always be proud of. Our Bosque is just the crown jewel of open space in the metropolitan area, in the state, frankly, because you have this vibrant, native, wild area in the middle of the largest city in the state of New Mexico. And nowhere else really has that. It's really a unique space and something unique that Albuquerque and Burnley County has done that no one else has, right? We've got a lot of these spaces with river walks and restaurants and, you know, the commercial consumerism in these wild native places. And we've done something different, and I am just incredibly proud of that as a resident here and a native New Mexican. So I'm just proud to see us continuing to build on that legacy and tying in that native Bosque space with the human element that it supports, right? The water from the river, the water from the north, from the snowmelt, feeding our farms, feeding our farmers, and ultimately feeding us that live here in the region and consume those products. So it's a beautiful space and a great plan, and I fully support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I move approval of this wonderful Trisco Asequia Madre plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye, yes.
Thank you both for being here. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eleven C, sorry, lost my place there. Constitutional amendment two, allowing public investment in community infrastructure. Madam Clerk, can you please provide a resolution number?
Yes, ma'am. AR twenty-two-four dash six.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas, did you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is an item urging our state legislature to take action on constitutional amendment two, which was on the ballot last, two Novembers ago now, during the general election. It was resoundingly supported by the voters of our state. And constitutional amendment two very simply allows the use of public funds for basic infrastructure and utilities that serve residences. So right now, we have the anti-donation clause, the much-maligned anti-donation clause, which affects so many projects that we do in government and affects our ability to do economic development, to do public health and welfare things, though there are exceptions. And our legal staff and other folks can have long discussions about what those exceptions mean and what those apply to. The bottom line is this amendment expressly allows the use of public funds for basic infrastructure to homes, to individuals' private residences. And this is particularly important in our rural areas. You know, we're in the largest county in the state of New Mexico, and, you know, of course, we've got some very urban areas that have plenty of infrastructure. It seems to never be enough, you know, we always need to do more high-speed broadband and, you know, upsizing our drainage and those kinds of things. But out in the rural areas, out in the east mountains, for example, many places, many residences don't have any of those things, no city water, no city sewer, usually electric access and often no broadband. And so it places those rural areas at a huge disadvantage here in Burnley County, but across the state, and in particular, I think of our tribal communities, which are impacted by this, out on the Navajo Reservation or in our many Tibo Pueblos that do not have adequate infrastructure, whether that's water, sewer, broadband. So in that amendment, it was stated that the legislature must enact implementing legislation to, you know, place the guardrails on this, to make sure that public funds are appropriately expended when used for these kinds of infrastructure projects. And unfortunately, we did not see the legislature act last year, so this resolution just very simply urges the legislature and the governor to place a priority on doing this business that the public resoundingly approved and would result in great improvements to public health and quality of life in the state of New Mexico, not just in Burnley County. And lastly, we had a couple of folks that were here, but weren't able to stay for public comment, but we're going to comment specifically on this in Burnley County and the challenges that this poses for specifically Entranosa, which is a water service provider out in the east mountains, and their ability to get water infrastructure to residents out there and to improve water infrastructure, to make sure that it's resilient in the face of climate change, to make sure that as we see our water tables drop and our heat waves increase, that we're able to respond and help our residents. That's our basic function of government, right? So with that, I urge your support. This resolution will reach out to the governor and the legislative delegation from Burnley County to tell them that this is a top priority of the county, to get this amendment implemented. So with that, I make a motion.
And I'll second that. Any discussion, comments? Commissioner Barbo. Commissioner Barboa?
I just, I'm so, I know we discussed it briefly previously, but I'm so interested. I hadn't heard that this actually went, I was always told that to change the anti-donation, we had to go to a vote. And I was unaware, I guess I just, so this happened, the voters voted for it, and the legislature has not acted upon it. And it's the idea that the legislature would then create the, like you said, guardrails, so it would create the opportunity to make sure that funds are being spent wisely. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may? Yeah.
Sorry, I repeat what you said, but yeah.
And just to give a little like context to this, for example, this water service provider last session was appropriated some capital outlay funding to improve some critical infrastructure out there. And they were not able to access that funding because they are a, I'm going to get this wrong, but I think it's like a mutual domestic association or they're not a public water utility, right? They're not owned like the county, the ABCWA is, you know, basically owned by the ratepayers and by the county and city. So it's a non-governmental entity and therefore they could not access those funds. So we literally have funds that are appropriated for critical infrastructure projects that cannot be accessed until the legislature puts it in writing.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's a huge issue and I would love to see the county taking leadership on it. It's the largest county in the country. We definitely need to be the one that pulls our weight for those smaller rural communities that don't have access like we do. And it still impedes us even with the kind of budget we have. So thank you for bringing this in full support.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
I just want to add that it, that's a great word, Commissioner Barboa, it does impede us as a whole state. The anti-donation clause is antiquated, I think originally intended, had, there was good intent behind it, but it has kept in New Mexico behind our neighboring states who have a more progressive understanding of the anti-donation. And so this needs, it's already been voted for and needs to move forward. And I agree, our legislature needs to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. Let's see, item 12, approvals, accounting and annual comprehensive financial report. Jackie Sanchez.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Sanchez, Director of Accounting and Budget. I would like to introduce Clifton Larson Allen, CLA, our contracted external auditors. They have been approved by the Office of State Auditor per state statute. They will be presenting this next agenda item, and this is to accept the fiscal year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I would like to mention that this is their eighth consecutive year in performing the audit, audited financials, as well as a single audit for Bernalillo County, local government as a whole, as well as the housing, affordable housing nonprofit, which is a blended component unit of Bernalillo County. I would like to thank CLA for their professional services that they have provided to the county. And it has been an absolute pleasure working with these individuals. So there's Georgie Ortiz and we have Brandon Credle, we have Matt Bone. So joining us this evening, we have Matt Bone, Managing Principal, as well as Brandon Credle, Senior Associate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Madam Chair and other Commissioners of the Board. We appreciate this opportunity to share the results of our FY23 audit of the county. And so to, in summary, provide those results, we issued two opinions as part of our audit. Both opinions were what we consider to be unmodified. That's a clean opinion. Again, that is the highest opinion that an independent public accounting firm can issue over a set of financial statements. As part of our audit, and as Jackie mentioned a minute ago, we did conduct a federal single audit. That is a audit over the federal funding that the county receives. We had two major programs this year, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and then also from the ARPA funding, the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. And that's generally what you guys would refer to as your ARPA funding and the way that you've allocated those dollars. We did not have any findings as they relate to the federal funds that we tested. We did have four overall findings as a result of our audit. One of those was a material weakness, and that was related to leases and subidas, that's subscription-based IT arrangements. Otherwise, we had three other matters related to our state compliance testing and some of the internal control work that we do as part of our audit, over cash receipts, the procurement and accounts payable process, and then the collateralization of deposits. As I mentioned before, there were no findings related to federal awards in our single audit. Finally, to go over resolution of prior year audit findings, we did have two findings last year that we reported to you and we reviewed as part of our FY23 audit. One of those was the collateralization of deposits, and that was repeated and modified. And then the other finding was related to eligibility and internal controls over Section Eight housing. And we did clear that finding. We did not see need to reissue that finding based on the procedures that we did. Just to fill you guys in on the steps, based on the Board of County Commissioners' approval of the financial statements, they have already been reviewed and released by the State Auditor's Office of the State in New Mexico. Upon approval by the Board of County Commissioners, they would then be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association and then as well as the Federal Audit Clearinghouse to communicate some of the results of our single audit. Finally, again, I know that we've mentioned it, this is our last year where we've had the opportunity to serve the county. We really do appreciate all of the work. Georgie Ortiz, who was the signing principal for all eight years of the engagement, wasn't able to be here tonight. She actually got to retire here in December, so we congratulated her on that. But in the exit conference that we held in December with the Audit Committee and a lot of the staff, she just, she couldn't say how much she appreciated all the staff, all of the great work that we've gotten to do with the county over the past eight years and just how much she values everyone. So I just wanted to pass along that sentiment to the County Commissioners as well. With that, we would be open to any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. Any questions? County Manager? Did you want to say something? A statement first?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I just, so since I've been county manager since 2015, you all have been our auditors. And I just wanted to thank you for your service. We've never had like any issues. You've helped us overcome, you know, any of our findings. You've worked with us. And I think, I just want to say you all have provided exceptional service to the county. And I want the public to know how great you are, CLA. You are wonderful. I'd recommend your service to anybody, and I really would, hands down. You all have done an exceptional job, and I just want to thank you and congratulate Georgie on her retirement. It's been great working with her. So thank you all for your, for your service. And if it's okay, Madam Chair, Shirley wanted to say a few words.
Okay. Shirley.
Yes. I'd like to say the same thing and let everybody know that it's not their last year because we're kicking them out or they don't want to be here anymore. It's the law, you can only have an independent auditor for a series of eight years. So that's the real reasoning behind that. But I also want to thank you for all of the work. You helped us when we had the CARES funding, with the ARPA funding, just understanding what we needed to do, breaking out the housing nonprofit, helping us set up the JPA with the, with UNMH and MDC, all of the work that we've done. I appreciate Georgie, she's helped us on just so many things. And you, Brandon, just trying to understand and help us work through the complexities as the accounting rules pile up and the gasbies and they're, you know, up there in the numbers now. I remember when I started, they were just like policy statements and I'm dating myself, but now they're numbers up into the hundreds closely. But I just want to thank you as well and wish you all well and tell Georgie as well. I know she was out of her voice when she, when we had the meeting last time, but thank you all and we appreciate you and we know we still have you till the, till the end of June, but just want to thank, publicly thank you for all your time and effort.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivas. Wes Charles.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our auditors and our budget team for this absolutely wonderful report. You know, it's very lengthy and very thorough. And actually, I was sort of thinking about this before it actually showed up on our agenda in our, in our last budget meeting. DCM Reagan referenced the ACFIR as a, as a great resource to understand the county's fiscal position. And over the holidays, when I had a little more time, I actually dove into a couple of these from '22 and '21. And, you know, this, this is great to see, you know, this, not, not a whole lot has changed, I think, obviously a little bit. But I guess, you know, this is not so much of a question as a statement, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the size of the general fund reserves, or frankly, all of the fund balance. So we have about, from, from this report, $647 million in fund balance of all combined government funds and $389 million in general fund balance, which is an increase in the general fund of about $41 million or 12%, 11.8%. And that's been a pretty consistent theme. I went back to, I believe it was 2013 in the ACFRs and kind of looked through the growth of the fund balance. And we've seen an overall growth of 93% in the total fund balance between '13 and '22. In this case, this wouldn't include '23, so I suspect that number would, would grow. And I understand, you know, that, that there is a piece of that, a large piece of that actually, that is required by DFA, right? There's, you know, it states all this very clearly in here what that number is, roughly $130 million that is required to be reserved of that general fund. But that's still a sizable amount of general fund that is in the assigned and unassigned categories, which are, I think, a little bit nebulous. And so I went through actually, and I went to Doniana County's ACFIR and the city's ACFIR because it's really nice, they're all pretty standardized and very similar, which makes it easy to kind of sift through what people are doing, what folks are doing. And our assignment of fund balance is very vague. We assign operational balance, capital balance, and I'm not seeing my other notes, but there's one other category that we assign. In Doniana's ACFIR, they actually assign very specifically. So they assign to detention facility, capital balance, you know, like very specific programs, reserves. And ours is very broad, and I think that that makes it a little bit difficult for me as a commissioner, and even more for members of the public to understand what we're saving that money for. And there may well be a good reason for that. I realize that. But seeing that we've had 180% growth in that assigned and unassigned balance, that's just that sort of flexible section over that 10-year time period is concerning because I don't believe the government exists for the purpose of saving money or running a profit. That's, that's not our job, right? We do things that the private sector does not do, right? Public safety, fires, police services, behavioral health services, right? These are things the private sector cannot make a profit on, nor do we really want them to, right? We don't want to decide if somebody gets public safety services because they can pay. We just want to make sure it's available to everyone. And so I'm just concerned that, you know, we've seen this, this very large growth in that category. And I think, you know, there's, there's a lot more to unpack here than we can ever do here in this sort of adoption of what is a excellent report. There's so much information in here that's, that's really good on the county's fiscal position. But I just, you know, I think we have a follow-up conversation that needs to be had here. Two other points I want to make before I close. We also saw continued growth in the behavioral health fund balance, which is upsetting to me as a commissioner that that continues to grow. We've, we've got to sort of figure out what's going on there. I've been waiting on, on the, the team to get me a report on this because I've had questions from legislators about this. You know, the statements that the county's sitting on now, nearly $100 million in just behavioral health money, what are you doing with that? Why do you need the state to help if you guys have all this money? And I know that we've committed money to, to good projects, Crisis Triage Center, the Gateway. I can't tell you if that's part of that fund balance number or not. And we need a very clear statement as a county that all of us can see of what is that fund balance for? Specifics. And, and this is great, but it's not the specifics, and, and we really need that. The last point is, going back to what I reviewed in other counties, just talking about the assigned and unassigned fund balance, because that's really all that matters. The city is holding roughly 15% of its reserves in that, or 15% of its overall budget in that category. Doniana County, around 45%. And this is the '22 report, so it may be different now. We were around 51%. So, you know, and as I researched this, what I read was, you want to hold a larger portion of this assigned and unassigned fund balance, the smaller the municipality, because your revenues may be more volatile. Your, your, you know, a downturn in the economy may show a larger dent in your operating revenues, the smaller you are, because you just have fewer properties, fewer gross receipts tax collections. So it makes sense that the cities would be lower than ours, but it does not make sense that Doniana County, which is like, I want to say one-fifth the size of Bernalillo County, somewhere in there, would potentially have a smaller assigned and unassigned fund balance than we do. That's concerning. I, I think we need to address that and, and get some information. And I know that the county manager and the deputy county manager are aware of these concerns, but, you know, we really need to get some answers on this. Now that this report is public, and I, you know, assume it will be adopted tonight, we really need to dive into the deeper discussion of what is all this money being held for? And then the next step is to talk about, is that the appropriate use of the money or do we need to look at other needs and uses for that money? So again, I really appreciate your work. I don't think this is anything that you all have done wrong, or frankly, anyone up here. I think this is, this is, this takes, you know, the commission, county manager, county finance team, our outside team, to, to get a handle on this and figure out what's going on. So thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I mean, I guess. Commissioner Barboa?
I guess, just, thank you, Madam Chair. And to that point, I get, like, is that usually within, I'm assuming that you all are just tasked with meeting where the county wants to hold reserves, you're not making those decisions? But is there recommendations or ways that you look at what other counties make suggestions, recommendations based on, on your analysis?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, you know, great observations, Commissioner. To answer your question, it's, you know, our, our role is to, to, to audit your financial statements and is your cash fairly presented, is your AR, et cetera? And, you know, we do look at the various fund balance more for understanding, you know, the various restrictions. So if, if management presents to us, we have a $3 million restricted balance, and then we look at, okay, what is the enabling legislation that restricts that? Because there are different classifications, which you get restricted, assigned, unassigned, et cetera. And there's, you know, different levels that cause those to be classified as such. And so, but, you know, as far as our audit, our opinion is the fair presentation of financials. We don't look at the reserves and say, hey, your reserves are not correct, you need to adjust it, except for there are certain restrictions with, you know, what DFA may require for the county. And so, you know, we can definitely, you know, look at it and, you know, at the request of management and try to do some comparative to, you know, other counties or, you know, municipalities to provide some recommendations, but that's not the scope of our audit. And, you know, there are, you are going to see And you, you know, there are, you are going to see, you know, without diving into a, a different county to understand what is the nature of, especially over the last couple of years, the amount of money that has come into these different governmental entities has been significant. And there's, you know, different causes of restrictions of, of the timing of when those funds are being expended. It may vary from county to county. So to, to your point, but looking at 22 to 23, we may see a, a very significant variation. But hopefully that answers your, your question. I don't, I don't know if you had anything to-
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions or county manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what I, before, you know, we, you know, we finished talking about this, I don't want this, I don't want there to be the perception that there's mismanagement of our finances, of our reserves. When, you know, we hear that there's all this money in reserves, it means that we're not doing something right. And you know what? That's not a bad problem to have, is to, to know that we have reserves. The county is very stable. We have received our AAA bond ratings. Our bond rating agencies look at those reserve and, and it's a, they have a favorable opinion about the fact that, you know, we do have a healthy, healthy reserves. But let me just, I'm not going to get into the general fund, but I will tell you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, for behavioral health, I think it's approximately, I think, $96 million that are in reserves, something like that. And I can tell you, I can go line, line by line, and I can tell you, there's probably more like, maybe 20 million in reserves, because that money is tied up. And some of that money, Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, is tied up in projects that you have asked us to fund, like for the city of Albuquerque, and they haven't spent the money yet. It's not their fault, but they're just going through a procurement process, and we're do, we're trying to analyze and we're trying to make sure that some of the funding is going to be, be spent appropriately. So I just don't want to end this meeting tonight with the public perception or anybody or the staff's perception that, you know, we're, we're not, you know, that we're, we're setting aside a large amount of funding and it's not being put to use. The public's perception of us and, and your all's perception is very, very important to us, and your trust and confidence is very important to us. And so I'm hoping that at another commission meeting, I'm happy to go over the, over this with you and go over how, you know, where, where these funds are going and what they're designated to be spent on. So, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you for the county manager.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Benson, first just-
Yeah, thank you. So I think, and perception is, I think that's an, an important term because that's what the audits are for, is, is for public transparency, making sure there's no, there's no money being hidden or not disclosed or, and so we do see what the general fund balance is, and it's clear and it is open to public. And you make sure that we're doing that, and then you're only there for eight years because we want to make sure that, that another firm would have the same opinion. But, but then Commissioner Olivas does make a good point, that the general fund can be vague if you don't know what you're looking for. Every time I've asked Deputy County, or, yeah, Deputy County Manager Reagan, she's able to explain where everything is, is like the, the city agreements that county managers spoke of. I just want to reiterate, I don't want people to also forget about our bond rating. We have the best bond rating that's possible. The city of Albuquerque does not. And you must respect debt. The United States government doesn't necessarily do that. We're in more debt than we can handle, and our debt payments just, interest payments just beat the military budget. Burnaleo County does respect debt, and because of that, we're good stewards of the money, which benefits the taxpayers. So it, it, actually, I kind of like the idea of breaking up the general fund and, and lying items, just so that, that there's no questions. But in terms of my perception, I don't have any questions with it. I think everything, I absolutely know everything is accounted for, and, and that money has been spent, it's just hasn't left the accounts yet. So, yeah, I, I think public perception is very important as well. And I think it's good to compare against other entities also, but you got to compare every factor, not just one account balance. That's a factor, but so are other issues. So, yeah, thank you. This, it was a thorough audit, and thank you so much. And I, yeah, thank you County Manager and Ms. Reagan for keeping us AAA rating.
I think you had a response, yes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just want to make one more comment, and I don't know if this was what the commissioner was looking for, but if, the, the financial statements in the front, which is referred to the basic financial statements, you'll have, you know, the different buckets of fund balance restricted, and doesn't necessarily show what that is with, on the front of the financial statements, but if you turn to the, the notes in the financial statements, page 80, it does break out at a, at a much greater detail as far as, you know, infrastructure, open space, housing, library bonds, park bonds, et cetera. Now, if you want to drill into that even further at specific projects, that's not going to be something presented in your financial statements. And, you know, you know, I think the county does a, you know, great job of having all of that information at a, a much granular level, but just want to, and maybe that was observed, I just want to point that out on page 80. So I just want to make that comment. Otherwise, you know, thank you for the opportunity to serve the, the county for the past eight years, and, you know, I didn't work directly on it necessarily, kind of behind the scenes on occasion, but, you know, Jackie and her team have always been, you know, very transparent, amazing to work with, and, you know, wish we can keep working with the county, but maybe in a couple of years. So, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for your report. Commissioner, Vice Chair Olivas.
I just wanted to say one, one final thing to, mostly to the, the manager and the finance team, that, you know, I want to be very clear, I'm not implying that, that there's been any kind of misconduct or misappropriation here. And, and to be clear, we're the appropriators up here. So, you know, if there is a, an issue, and let's say we decide we haven't, we should be spending more of this, or we should be using this in, in a different way, it's also our fault, right? It's, it's our role as commissioners to oversee that. So I want to be very clear, this is, this is not pointing the finger at anybody, this is not implying that anybody's done anything wrong. If anything, I think that, like I said, perhaps we're being a bit too conservative, but I, I'm not really saying that, I'm saying that's a question mark. We, we need to answer that question. And the only way we get that answer is by diving into the specifics, and I know that our, our manager and our finance team will, will work with us to get us that information so that as the appropriators, we can, we can answer that question, or at least try to answer that question and decide, is this the appropriate position for the balances, or is there adjustments needed one way or the other? But I think, you know, certainly, it's better to be in this position than the other position. I'll, I'll be the first to admit that, right? We would rather be looking at a problem of having too much funds than not enough, right? That is always a, a better place to be, and I commend the, the leadership on, on working to make sure that we're not in that position. And there, there are a number of states right now, state governments, that are in some pretty dire situations with their, their fiscal picture. So I, I commend the leadership on that, and, and again, I'm no way implying, and nor do I want the public to believe that, that I'm implying that there's been mismanagement or anything like that. I think this is all very much above board, but I just want to see those details and then, you know, make sure those details are widely available to the public so that folks, general public, legislators, ourselves, have a really good understanding of why this money is there and what it's going to, because I do believe that most of it is allocated to, to good projects that, that will eventually be spent down at the appropriate time. So, that's all.
Commissioner Barbo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all so much for this thorough report and for really keeping us aware of, of, and this ACFIR. I'm excited to learn more about it. Just to the conversation tonight, I think it is important, I'm not the best at being a person with reserves, but, and I, I, I thank our leadership for, for that. But I also just want to say, you know, like, in the parts that I, I often say, I come here because of our public safety department and everything that falls sort of under that. And, you know, we have been reactive and had to move money quickly in reaction to some of the defaults there, that have meant lawsuits and emergency rooms and emergent, you know, quick emergency funding, which I think, when I want us to remain in, above the bar and in the right place with our budget, I also believe that we need to be proactive in those spaces where we are also paying out another end. So I just, um, just, you know, to our leadership, appreciate you. I think our budgets are solid and I'm grateful for that. And I hope that as we, I welcome this opportunity to look at the reserves more closely, to think about how we can be proactive rather than reactive to some of these things that we can see coming along between the, on our public safety division. Thank you.
I'd like to move approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your work. And now we go to item 12B, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Thank you, Denise, for being here. Denise Benavides.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Denise Benavides. I'm the principal financial analyst for the finance division. If you recall, several months ago, the commission had requested that we look at this project for feasibility. The analysis has been completed, and the Burnaleo County ARPA core team is recommending the approval of ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $1 million for the Burnaleo County Early Learning Facility project in accordance with expenditure category 6.0 revenue replacement provisions of government services. The funding will enable the county to cover the early work package for rough grading and utility et cetera, extensions to a new pre-K facility for childcare functions in the South Valley, South Valley community of Burnaleo County. If any ARPA funds remain after the rough grading and utility extension, they'll be used to offset the cost of the furniture fixtures and equipment package for the project's furniture and playground equipment. Once the first phase of the multi-phase project is completed, on the identified site of 900 Armio Street Southwest, a new approximately 5,000 square foot building on a parcel owned by the Burnaleo County will be ready for occupancy and will be utilized by over 40 students every school year. This new site is located steps away from the current facility operated by the Peanut Butter and Jelly Organization. The proximity between the new property and the existing one allows the programs to rely upon each other upon the completion of this phase. This funding will provide approximately 13% of the overall project cost. I have the director with me of Fleet and Facilities if you have any more questions.
Thank you. This is a great project. Thank you, Ms. Benavides. And I move approval.
Second.
And are there any questions for the, for the team? No. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam C, Office of Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Initiatives, Pam Acosta, manager.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair. Thank you for your service. Congratulations, Commissioner Olivas, on Vice Chair. Appreciate it. Happy New Year, by the way. My name is Pam Acosta. I'm the senior manager for the Behavioral Health Initiatives. Bringing before you a request to authorize the county manager to award and execute agreements with selected offers in response to the, the Behavioral Health Initiative, Small Behavioral Health Provider RFP, number 51-23-JM. As you may recall, the BHI Small Providers RFP's purpose was to solicit bids from small behavioral health providers whose annual operating budget is $500,000 or less to apply for one-time funding to expand or develop their services, which would not otherwise be funded, and to support the expansion of the Behavioral Health Continuum, something we were discussing tonight. Behavioral Health Initiative is in the procurement phase and would like to extend offers and enter into contracts with the selected providers from that RFP. The motion before you this evening are as follows. The first seeks to authorize the county manager to award agreements resulting from the solicitation. The second authorizes the county manager to execute and approve agreements with awarded providers. And then lastly, authorizes the county manager to approve future amendments and/or subsequent agreements in accordance with AR 2023-77. And Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, at this time, I stand for any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Acosta? Commissioner Barbo.
Just quickly, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Manager Acosta, for always keeping us up to date on this. I know we increased the amount, we doubled the amount from 500,000 to a million. Do you know, and if you don't know offhand, I can get the information later, but on average, how, so I, I, I believe we upped it because there was more applicants than, than what we expected. Do you know the average request for, from these small-
Madam, Madam Chair and Commissioner Barbo, so we actually increased from 1 million to 2 million to, to have more, more applicants or may, more availability to help these providers. Some of the requests came in as low as 50,000, some came in at 200,000. You know, granted, I, I don't know all the details, I'm not on the RFP, and, and we're still in the procurement phase, but I do believe that we may be having to go out for a second solicitation to make sure that we get more providers who want to apply for this. We will be, if, once we do go out for the RFP, the, the second solicitation, we're expanding it to include providers who have not, who have previously received money from the county. The initial RFP excluded those members, if they've received money from Behavioral Health Initiative, this one will expand to allow those members to grow even further, even if they've received BHI funding in the past.
Thank you so much for that. I, I'm pleased about that because I both appreciate startup funds, but I also know that the reason why I even had this request, because so many of our current grantees are like, only UNM gets all the monies, we don't have enough opportunities. So I think that's so important to open up to folks who've already received the funding. I just want to make sure, one of the comments I got from some of the small, you know, 500,000 isn't that much, it's like two, three staff, and from some of the smaller, like, two-staff behavioral health providers, that said that, you know, the, the application process was really cumbersome. And as we know, like, if you're only two staff, you don't have a lot of administrative staff to do these kind of things, is there support that the county offers or ways that we can include support in this so maybe some of those smaller providers can have access?
Thank you. Madam Chair and Commissioner Barbo, yes. It's my understanding that Procurement Office does offer that technical support for, when it comes to request for proposal, you know, and then, of course, the BHI is always available to guide folks on what to look for, direct them to pass proposals, you know, items like that, evidence-based research. So we will help with that technical aspect, because we recognize the small providers may not have that. You're right, two or three staff members, we, we can guide them with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did you have a question? Any other questions? Let's see, so I move approval.
I move, or second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor? Aye?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate your hard work. And finally, item 13, discussion item. This is the inspection report of the Metropolitan Detention Center, and you all have a report in your, in your packet. Fortunately, we started the meeting with a very good presentation, I think, from the MDC Advisory Board that covered a lot of this, but this was a, an in-person inspection on August 28th, 2023. I attended this tour with the help of MDC staff and the legal department. While I was there, I was informed that because of this population, MDC is considered a mega jail with a population that needs medical and psychiatric care. And as we've heard, as we've talked about, we're very pleased that UNMH has just taken over this as a medical provider and are doing a very good job increasing the number of their nursing staff, updating the client care, and we're very pleased with that. The correctional staff increases and technology upgrades have, that we've approved have been a great help also out there, and so for the safety of everyone in the building. So the report has more details. If there are any questions, happy to answer them, or our county attorney can as well. So I move approval.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Awesome. Item 14, our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, in this chamber at 5:00 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. in this chamber at 5:00 PM. And this meeting is adjourned.